Greetings and welcome to this week's edition of the Rock County Civics Academy Lesson Plan. The Rock County Civics Academy is a production of Common Sense Reestablished. This LLC was founded by Richard Gerber, Paul Murphy, and Dwayne Severson. CSR is a communications company that provides educational programming on topics of a public interest and is not affiliated with any political party and is committed to commonsense-based principles as espoused in the United States Constitution and Bill of Rights. Our programs are nonpartisan, that is, we are not affiliated with any organized or even unorganized political party or political movement. This series of presentations is made possible through the support of our growing list of benefactors, including Big Radio, JATV, Public Access Media, Ragnarsoft, Ragnarsoft.com, Have Camera, Wisconsin, Tom Edwards, The Italian House, Havana Coffee on Milton Avenue. Please keep in mind, the views expressed are those of the host and guests and do not necessarily represent the views of our benefactors or the broadcast entities who will be reproducing our content for later public distribution.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's Rock County Civics Academy. For the next hour, we'll be chatting with the candidates who are running for the position of City Council Member with the Janesville City Council. The election is April 4th and it's just seemingly a few weeks away, so it's an ideal time to get to know the candidates and find out where they stand on the issues. I would remind folks that there'll be an opportunity throughout our question and answer session tonight for you to submit questions that you want to have included in our discussion. So, there are sheets of paper available, I believe, on just about every chair. There should be pens and pencils circulating. If you have questions, write them down legibly, the operative word there is "legibly," so that I can read them to our panelists in the hopes that, we don't want to miss anybody's question. If you've taken the time to prepare it, we'll take the time to ask it. With that, again, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the panel. I'd like to begin my introductions with, in alphabetical order, current incumbent member of the council, Michael Jackson. Michael, welcome. David Marchick, who is currently the Vice President of the Janesville City Council. Heather Miller is a member of the City Council and running for reelection. The two challengers in this race are Richard Nino, Richard, welcome, and Spencer Zimmerman. Spencer, glad to have you with us. If we could, we'll start this off tonight by, I'll ask each of you to introduce yourself and share with us while you're running for the position of City Council Member. And, Michael, we're going to start with you. So, please take 90 seconds, introduce yourself, and share with us why you are running for the Janesville City Council.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you as well for the Civic Academy for hosting this event. Much appreciated. I love Janesville. I have lived here for 22-plus years. I pastor the church here for better than 16 years. I have to look at this city and say, "It's my city." I claim it as my hometown. It's been good to me, and serving on the council has provided me with an opportunity, in my own opinion, of being able to give something back to this city, to the populace. I believe that my life skills, my education, my experience has equipped me for such a time as this. I have been a member of the, I forgot what I'm a member of. No, I'm a member of the Community Development Authority, which has helped me deal with affordable housing issues. I'm a member of the Board of Health Net, which has helped me to deal with health issues. I've been a part of a thriving church that helped me to deal with a variety of issues related to poverty, homelessness, and the like. Out of that came a food pantry, out of that came Freedom Fest. I just believe that I have been equipped for such a time as this. I also believe that having just gone through or going through, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. David Marchick, please. Please introduce yourself and share with us while you're running for the Janesville City Council.
You bet. Thanks, Rich, and thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. It's great to see people interested. So, this is my, running for my second term. I've been in Janesville 30-plus years. Moved here when my kids were very young, went through the schools. And Janesville was very good to us and our family. As I, my kids got older, where they didn't need as much of my attention, I decided it was time to give back to this community, and I've done that in a number of different ways. A lot of involvement things that I've been in. My biggest one is the downtown. I've been involved in the downtown revitalization for over 15 years, and very proud of what myself and a lot of people have done over a long term. And, two years ago, I thought, you know what? It's time to kind of take that next step and to give back to the whole city, and I feel I have a lot to give with my background. As a banker, I deal with a lot of different types of businesses, different types of people. I've just seen and experienced a lot, and I think I bring a good breadth of knowledge to this position. It's been, it has been rewarding. It really has. There's good times, there's bad times, but it's been a rewarding experience, and hopefully I'll have another two years to enjoy that.
Thank you, David. Heather Miller, please. Why are you running for the Janesville City Council?
Thank you, Rich. I appreciate everybody coming out. Whether, whether you realize how much you bring to the table, you just don't know until you're here. I'm a mom, didn't know a whole lot about city government, but I knew what I wanted was change, and change is what I brought to the table. I have experience as a mom, I'm an organizer, I have my hands in everything under the sun, from caregiving to driving school to raising six kids. So, I dabble a lot. My girlfriend says I'm Wonder Woman, so I try to do the best I can. And, what brought me to the council very specifically was the transportation utility. And when that came to the table, it was something that I felt very passionate about because it was flawed, and I knew with my law enforcement background, the law was not in our favor as a city, and we needed to make that change. And so, that has grown into what we have today, and now we're looking at so many more different issues, and hopefully we will see some good growth in the near future.
Thank you, Heather. Richard Nino, please introduce yourself, and why are you running for the Janesville City Council?
Thank you, Rich, and thank you to everyone who's taking the time to participate in this. I grew up in Janesville. I'm a Parker graduate. I moved back to Janesville 25 years ago to raise my family. My wife and I own Lark Restaurant and Lark Market Sandwich Bar all on South Main Street. The, joining the council comes deeply from this idea of contributing to Janesville, to society, which began with my parents. My father being a pediatrician, my mother being an addicted volunteer, apparently because of all the different things that she did over the years. It's, I just see it as a critical part of my responsibility as a citizen to try to contribute. We, as I said, we own three businesses. We pay a lot of taxes. I'm very much involved in the downtown, I'm a member of the Business Improvement District. I see this as an opportunity to bring my experience and expertise to the council.
Thank you, Richard. Spencer Zimmerman, please introduce yourself and share with us why you are running for the Janesville City Council.
Well, I want to thank you and everyone else here for participating in democracy, and I've always wanted to serve my community. I served in the Air Force. I was actually on duty during the 9/11 terrorist attacks, and after my time in the Air Force, I just felt like public office would be a good way to continue serving. And I've ran for office previously. I've ran for Janesville City Council a few times. I've actually ran against a couple other people here in the room, and I've always wanted to serve. So, that's why I got involved and ran for public office after my time in the Air Force. And I just think that we need to look at every dollar that's spent and make sure it's being spent efficiently. I'm a fiscal conservative. I think that, you know, we should try to lower taxes if possible. I definitely don't want to see taxes increase. I think we've seen that, and I just think that, you know, we need to look at every dollar spent and make sure it's being spent efficiently. We also need to make sure that we give law enforcement all the tools that they need to keep the streets safe, and, you know, we need to look at our priorities right now. You know, we could be seeing some very difficult times in the near future, you know? We had that balloon flying over from China, you know? We're supplying tanks and stuff in a war in Europe, you know? Some people might, you know, say that we're in the middle of a third world war right now, so I just think that we need to make sure that our priorities align with the world right now and the situation that the globe is in. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. We're going to address each of the questions, and we'll follow the alphabet. So, I'm going to start in the reverse form of the alphabet, so this first question goes to you, Spencer. What do you see as the most important issues facing the City Council?
Well, I think that an uncertain future is probably one of the most important issues that are going to face the City Council. You know, we don't know what's going to happen in this war that's going on in Europe. You know, we could find ourselves in a situation, you know, we just had a balloon flying over from China, you know? You might wake up one day and there's no electricity, you know? You could add, you know, fortunately, it was just a spy balloon, you know? But if that was a weapons platform, they could have detonated a nuclear device at high altitude and it would fry their electrical grid. So, we don't know what kind of challenges that we're going to face in the near future. And this war in Europe could easily, it's already drawing in neighboring countries, and, you know, I just think that, you know, we need to prioritize what's important, you know? Is an ice arena important? You know, if a war does break out, you know, that ice arena might sit empty for a few years, you know? There's something called selective service, you know? If there's conscription, you know? We had a draft during World War II. Right now, you look at the size of the Chinese Army, you know, there's 4 million, you know, total if you include their reserves, and, you know, we, right now, you know, we could see some very difficult times in the future, so we need to make sure that we are prepared for any kind of eventuality.
Thank you, Spencer. Richard Nino, same question. What do you see as the most important issues facing the?
I think to anyone who's been paying attention, the biggest issue facing the council revolves around the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center, but that actually speaks to the biggest issue, and that is that of development within the city and what that means for the city. It's my contention that the only, the only possible way of maintaining taxes at the rate they're currently, where they currently are, or minimizing them, is through development. It's only by expanding the tax base and drawing in more taxpayers, whether they're businesses or individual families, it's the only way we can spread the tax burden out more so that the individuals, other individuals in the city aren't burdened still more. And, making the city a desirable, attractive place for businesses and families leads us back to the Sports and Convention Center, but the bigger issue that the Convention Center represents is the whole issue of development within the city.
Thank you, Richard. Heather Miller, please. What do you see as the most important issues facing the City Council?
There are several. I would say one of the most important issues is our economic growth. We've done a really, really good job at attracting businesses and increasing our numbers on the industrial parks. We've acquired more land because we have more people asking. A lot of people are attracted to Janesville, and so be it, because the more business that we can bring in and attract, the more stable our taxes are going to be, because, let's face it, everybody in this city, I think, whoever owns a house, was hit with a tax, a tax hit, you know? When we, when we got all of our revisions just a few weeks ago, that had to sink in, and the only way to offset that is to bring more businesses in. We're already expanding our housing. We need to continue on the path to find affordable housing. People are being taxed out of their homes. Those who aren't are experiencing higher taxes. Let's level it out, bring in some more business so that we can share and keep everything flat.
Thanks, Heather. Dave Marchick, what do you see as the most important issues facing the City Council?
Common theme here. We need to make Janesville an attractive place to live. You know, we call ourselves, we want to be the community of choice, and there's a lot that goes into that. And so, we need to not be afraid to make investments in our community that are going to make it a better place to live, that are going to attract people, that are going to attract businesses. Those people are going to pay taxes, they're going to spend money at our restaurants, our grocery stores. If you own a business, they might spend money at your business. So, we've got to keep Janesville moving forward. And one of the biggest challenges we have is the state shared revenue formula. Janesville's got to shorten the stick for a long time. I don't know how it gets fixed. We need to keep talking. The good thing is, I think that issue's starting to get a little more traction with other municipalities, but it's real money. If that was adjusted properly and we got what our peer cities got per capita, it was an extra $5 to $7 million a year that we would have to spend. So, that's a big issue. The Woodman's Sports and Convention Center is obviously a big issue that this next council's going to have to grapple with. We've got to find a way to get this done with the right financing in place. I think that is, it could be a real catalyst to all kinds of things I'm worried about are Milton Avenue corridor, and I don't want to become known for, "Oh, Janesville, they're the ones that lost them all and their Milton Avenue died."
Thank you, Dave Marchick. Michael Jackson, what do you see as the most important issues facing?
I'm going to deviate from the other answers. I think the primary issue that's before the council right now is the selection of the new city manager. Council has spent hours, we spent a couple of hours yesterday, we have two days dedicated to this process in a few weeks. This is a big, big issue. The direction our city's going to go for the next seven, 10, 15 years perhaps will depend upon the selection of that council. He or she's going to, well, I should say he, because all of the remaining candidate candidates are he's, he's going to have a lot to say about the WSCC. He's going to have a lot to say about taxes and shared revenue. Some of these candidates have an expertise in shared revenue and tax issues. He or she's going to have a lot to say about bringing business into town and development. A financial leadership guru of a number of years ago, John Maxwell, used to have this as a cliche. He shared it everywhere. Everything rises or falls on leadership, and I think the leadership that is going to sit in that office on the fourth floor for the next number of years is critically important, and the council is going to provide guidance, direction to that person, to our city, over these next years as he or she or he gets his feet on the ground.
We have heard a constant theme across the Board of State Shared Revenue as being an issue that should be closely watched. We're going to go to Richard Nino on this question. We'll start with you, Richard. City finance is a constant issue requiring your attention. Does the state shared revenue formula need attention? And if you had the power, how would you correct any deficiencies with the current funding formula?
It certainly needs to be changed. There was an article in the State Journal this morning that it hasn't changed since 1960, if I remember correctly. That article, the lead in the article was about possible proposals of changing sales tax distribution and the impact that, the impact that that might have on cities of 30,000 people or more. I've already been in contact with Sue Conley and Mark Spritzer, hopefully not overstepping my bounds, but as a private citizen, asking them to look at the possibility of providing Janesville with multi-year grants, as had been the case up until, what, two years ago, to try to equalize the shared revenue distributions across the cities. It's certainly an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm encouraged that, I have seen or heard that it's attracting attention on both sides of the aisles in Madison. It's something that just needs to be done. It needs to be fair, based on current populations rather than what they were 62 years ago.
Thank you, Richard. Heather Miller, same question. City finance is a constant issue requiring your attention. Does the state shared revenue formula need attention? And if you had the power, how would you correct the deficiencies with that current funding formula?
That's tricky. That's tricky, because whenever you have a conversation with someone in regards to shared revenue, you will always be told where there's winners, there's losers. And so, nobody is willing to step up to the plate and say, "You can have what you deserve, and one of our sister cities is just going to be sucking wind." You know, nobody's willing to do that. Nobody's willing to make that jump. And so, until we are able to get the message across in such a way, in so many fashions, that the change actually happens, I feel like we've been knocking on this door since GM shut down. You know, we've, we're just running around in circles and we're not successful. How can we fix this? Grants, perhaps? I mean, you're just relying on something that may or may not be there. The only other option is bringing more business in, bringing more community, bringing more people into our community to flourish, you know, to allow it to flourish. That's the best that we have. Until they, until they correct it at the state level, that's the best we can do.
Thank you, Heather. Dave Marchick, same question. City finance is a constant issue requiring your attention. Does the state shared revenue formula need attention? And if you had the power, how would you correct any deficiencies with that current funding formula?
So, you know, as Heather said, the political will is not there to change that formula because you're going to have the winners and the losers. What needs to happen is to change the overall funding, change the whole shared revenue and how it's funded. As Rich mentioned, you know, there's this, now there's this movement of, "Okay, just get rid of that formula completely, start over, and look at the sales tax distribution from the state rather than that formula." Right now is the time for us to really be pushing on this. The state has, it's up to, I think, $8 billion now in excess, you know, cash shitting around. They've got the money to try and help the municipalities. We're not the only municipality that's struggling with this shared revenue. So, you're never going to get them to say, "Okay, we'll fix the shared revenue, and now, boy, you're going to get less, Janesville, you're going to get more, Madison gets less." That's not going to happen. What you have to do is change the whole system, and hopefully, everybody then can get a little bit of a boost with this surplus that the state has right now. But it's critical, it's hard, but there is more traction now than there's been since I can remember. So, fingers crossed.
Thank you, Dave Marchick. Michael Jackson, city finance is a constant issue requiring your attention. Does the state shared revenue formula need attention? And if you had the power, how would you correct any deficiencies within that current funding formula?
Yes, it needs correcting. I've been told repeatedly that it's not going to be corrected, and there's nothing really that we can do. And all the while, the cities, or the state rather, sits on $7 to $8 billion, as Dave just correctly noted a moment ago. I sat down with Senator Nosse a year ago this month at Havana Coffee, discussed this issue. This was the issue on the table, an hour and a half discussion. You and I know about it because I talked to you about the discussion, and I laid out a plan, how we can address state shared revenue, how we can level the playing field, how we can keep winners, and we can eliminate some of the losses for some of our peer cities and other cities. Nothing came out of that, I'll be honest, but I wasn't, I wasn't willing to say, "Hey, I'm going to stick with no." I think we can still make it happen. I've had two conversations with Sue Conley, and as you, Richard, I believe that she was positive. I felt movement there that, yeah, we can make something happen. I tell you what, you people have as much to do with this as the City Council, quite frankly. Our city manager said the other night in his State of the State address, "The citizens of this city need to get involved in this issue and write your state legislators. Do that. Do what we're trying to do. Change the system. Your voice will make that happen."
Thank you, Michael. Spencer Zimmerman, city finance is a constant issue requiring your attention. Does the state shared revenue formula need attention? And if you had the power, how would you correct any deficiencies within that current funding formula?
Well, you know, it's nice to, you know, think, you know, if you had the power, would you, you know, what would you do? Well, you know, I tried to run for Assembly, and, you know, that would have given me a hand in making those kind of decisions. Unfortunately, I didn't win, but, you know, we need to create a business-friendly environment that's going to bring new jobs and opportunity here to Janesville, and that's the real solution. That's how it's going to change, because you'll bring more money in by, by new businesses opening up here in Janesville, new opportunities, you know? We have all that property where the GM plant was, you know? We can get another manufacturer to come here, another automobile manufacturer, maybe we could bring new jobs, new opportunity here that would solve that problem by increased revenues coming in from, but, you know, I would like to change that, and, you know, that's why I ran for Assembly, you know? And, you know, if your representative isn't doing what she needs to do in order to, you know, bring in his money for the city, you know, you've got to vote for someone else, and maybe that'll be, you know, the solution.
Thank you, Spencer. I would remind the audience that we welcome your questions, and if you have the opportunity, write them down, because we'd love to have the panel have the chance to address your questions specifically, and we will definitely fit them into our discourse this evening. Heather Miller, this next question will begin with you. Civic engagement is a constant concept that we hear about on a regular basis. How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition of civic engagement?
Civic engagement. I feel like I'm always engaged in some capacity. I think it's real important that people volunteer in their communities. I think the more you volunteer, the more you get involved in one way or another, be it with a nonprofit, be it with city government, you get a feel for what your community is really and truly like. You know, I can honestly say, I think Janesville is an amazing city. I'm comfortable here. I'm comfortable raising my kids here, and I enjoy every little aspect of life in Janesville. And, I can't say that about neighboring communities, though I've lived there. And I will tell you that there is so much to learn through volunteerism that, I've been with Echo for 25 years in various capacities, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. And it's made me open my eyes to see the vast array of folks that live here in the community as well, and so, I would encourage anyone.
Thank you, Heather. Dave Marchick, same question. Civic engagement is a concept we hear a lot about on a regular basis. How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition? How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition of civic engagement?
So, my thought on civic engagement, and I'll kind of bring it back to my role in the city council, is whatever you're gonna do, do it 100%, right? You know, when, when I first was considering running for city council, I talked to a handful of past city council members. And, and I got, and one of my questions was, "How much time did you devote to that?" And those answers were all over the board and it made no sense to me. But then I figured it out. You can be a city council member, you can show up to the meetings and you can vote. Or you can be a city council member and you can do the research, you can listen to the voicemails, you can respond to emails, you can dig in, you can talk to state legislators, you could do the homework, do it right. And that's how I do it. Anything I do is that. I'm not gonna do anything if I'm not gonna give it 100%. So, that, that's my feeling is, if I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna, I'm all in. Because you could be a city council member and spend very little time doing it, but you wouldn't be a good city council member. And that goes for anything that you do.
Thank you, David. Michael Jackson, same question. Civic engagement is a concept we hear a lot about on a regular basis. How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition of civic engagement?
One of my favorite definitions, oh, excuse me, terms is civic or servant leadership. That is a person who gives themselves to the service of others. I see myself, and frankly, I'm gonna just give a shout out to the present council. Those that are on the council, without exception, are servant leaders. I'm gonna vote for Heather. She and I see things differently on the Woodman Center, but I think she's a great council person. Paul Williams is sitting back there, the same thing. We're, we're into this because each one of us want to serve our community. We love our community and so, by example, we're doing what we can to make this a better place. I have visited, I have no idea how many businesses. I've walked the mall, visits, the businesses in the mall. I've gone down West Milwaukee Street when it was under construction and talked to business owners there, just trying to get a feel, how are they surviving in that economic climate? I'm on, I think, I was on seven boards until recently, I dropped off at two. I would hope that my service to my community and being out there would say to others, "Hey, if that old guy can do it, I can do it. I can serve my community. I can make this a better place."
Thank you, Michael. Spencer Zimmerman, civic engagement is a concept we hear a lot about on a regular basis. How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition of civic engagement?
Well, I definitely think that it's great that we have an organization like the Rock County Civics Academy that promotes civics here and, you know, I'm happy to participate in, in this debate here and, you know, when I, when I served in the Air Force, you know, I, it was, it was a matter of wanting to serve my community, wanting to serve my country. And, you know, I, I definitely encourage anyone else that, that, you know, who wanna serve, whether it be, you know, in the military or running for public office, you know, I believe most importantly that if you, if you wanna do the, if you wanna serve your country, don't give up. Continue to, you know, that's why I continue to run for, for office, you know, I, I think that, you know, if you believe in something, you shouldn't give up and you should continue to try to serve. So, you know, I, I absolutely think that it's great that we, we have people here who care about the community and who vote and, and wanna get involved in the entire process.
Thank you, Spencer. Richard Dino, same question. Civic engagement is a concept we hear a lot about on a regular basis. How will you, as a member of the council, promote and practice your definition of civic engagement?
Well, currently, I, I practice a great deal of civic engagement because I stand behind the counter at our markets about 40 hours a week and I talk to all comers and I'll say it right now, if I'm elected, stop by Tuesday through Saturday, I'll be there and I'll listen to anybody who wants to talk to me. But beyond that, civic engagement has, I think, part of the issue is awareness, making sure that everybody understands all the different boards and committees, organizations that they could join. I know that some of the committee, city committees have a hard time being filled because there aren't that many volunteers. And yet, all these committees do real work that affect the community and it's important I spent six years on the board of the Salvation Army and much like Heather, I was moved to learn of citizens in the community who might not be particularly visible on a daily basis to me. And it was very important in my life. But I think that engaging is, is everything we need to do. It's a people's democracy and we need to be engaged.
Thank you, Richard. I'm gonna go with a couple of questions that came in from the audience and I'll try and stay as close to the verbiage that's provided as it's humanly possible. This is from an audience question. Why would sales tax be used for police, fire, or infrastructure instead of property taxes used for that purposes? If the Woodman Sports and Convention Center brings revenue to restaurants and hotels, how about they finance it instead of the taxpayers? So, that's kind of a, two questions. And we'll let, we'll start the conversation off with you, Dave Marsha.
I thought I was the one that hadn't started yet, so.
You're the one who has to start that one. So, the first one has to do with funding specific areas of city services, police, fire, and infrastructure with sales tax as opposed to property taxes. And the second is, why don't the beneficiaries pay for the Woodman Sports and Convention Center?
Gotcha. Thank you. The sales tax idea really, property taxes are gonna still pay for a lot of our services, there's no question. The sales tax idea is a different way to distribute the shared revenue that, that is already being sent to municipalities. It's not new money coming, different money. It's still the money the state sends to the municipalities to help us function. It's just a different way to formulate it that maybe makes it a little more of an even playing field. So, it's, so you're, we're still gonna have to pay our taxes. That's still gonna cover a lot of, more of the, the services that we provide than the state shared revenue. So, it's not an either or, it's both. I still, I still only get 90 seconds for two questions, huh? That just hit me. Sports and Convention Center, hospitality's gonna benefit greatly. Two things I'll say about that. Number one, who was hurt so badly by the pandemic? Those groups, those people. Number two, why, why shouldn't they pay for it? They are. Guess what? They all pay property taxes too. So, they are pitching in as well to pay for this. And guess what? The ones that are around there, their, their property values are gonna go up, they're gonna pay more taxes. So, they are pitching in and they are, they are paying their share, so to speak, and, and they're gonna see an increase in their taxes, more so than the rest of us because their property values are gonna go up because of all the development that's gonna happen on that corridor.
Thank you, Dave Marsha. It's a two for one.
And I got it done in time.
Yep, we like to call those twofers. So, Michael Jackson, you have the same challenge. Why would sales tax be used for police, fire, or infrastructure instead of property taxes? And why aren't the beneficiaries of the revenues for, from the Woodman Sports and Convention Center paying for the Woodman Sports and Convention?
Before we start the time, I've got a question for you, Mr. Moderator. Are you going to ask another question about the WSCC or is this the only shot we get at that?
I'm thinking that this is probably the only shot that you may get at it. But then again, I may change my mind going forward. I have that luxury.
I'm not quite as versed as my esteemed banker friend is with his verbiage and so, I'm gonna just.
So, I would recommend you use your time judiciously.
I'm gonna go with the second question, time begin. I'm gonna stick with the WSCC. To me, the tipping point as to whether or not I would support that complex was, what is best for the city of Janesville? And I came down on the side, going forward with this project is the best for our city, for the young, the old, the rich, the poor, the north, south, east, west side. This is going to be good for our city. Now, I do not want to imply that this is a flippant answer. I've spent over 150 hours on this. I've studied private and public funding of sports complexes in our state. I've, I've walked that mall, I've met with the manager, sat down face to face with her. I've looked at the whole picture and of all the complex issues I've dealt with, this is by far the hardest one. But it all came down, I repeat, to the issue of what is best. I know that from what I have heard, and this is not concrete, 200 people could stand to lose their jobs if that mall went down. At the same time, 278 is the projected figure of new jobs that would be added if we were to approve the complex. There would be an economic shot in the arm throughout our community. I just have to be in favor, but the cost of saying no, to me, is much higher than the cost of saying yes.
In the time that you've got remaining, you wanna address the actual question?
No.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Again, two questions for one, Spencer. Why would sales tax be used for police, fire, and infrastructure as opposed to property taxes, in your opinion? And the second part of that question is, if the Woodman Sports and Convention Center brings revenues to restaurants and hotels, shouldn't the beneficiaries pay for that project?
Well, you know, I don't wanna, I, I think we should, we need to do whatever we can to make sure that we hold the line on taxes. I don't wanna see property taxes increase. I don't wanna see, you know, any taxes increase and, and, you know, I think that if we could get rid of maybe the wheel tax and, and, you know, find a way to, to fund our, our roads without, you know, charging an extra $20 when, you know, you get your car registered, you know, I'd like to see us cut taxes whenever possible and, and, you know, if we need to make cuts in other places, you know, if people don't wanna see their taxes increasing continuously and, and you have to look at, you know, if, if, what's the next project that they're gonna wanna spend money on? What's the next, you know, if, if this goes through, what's, you know, it, it's got, you gotta, you gotta draw the line somewhere and, you know, I just think that we need to look at every dollar spent, make sure it's being spent efficiently, and reduce the burden on the taxpayers as much as possible. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, I, I just, I think that we need to, like I said, live within our means.
Thank you, Spencer. Richard Dino, the two for one questions. Why would we spend sales tax dollars on police, fire, or infrastructure as opposed to property tax dollars? How do you feel about that? And second, should the beneficiaries of the increased traffic caused by the Woodman Sports and Convention Center pay for that center?
Regarding the first, it, it's really sort of a point because Janesville doesn't receive sales tax funding. The county does. As Dave pointed out, it comes through the shared revenue and there is no differentiation as to where it's used. And I, if Janesville were to be able to enact the sales tax, I wouldn't imagine there would be any differentiation between that and property taxes as to how it were spent and I, I couldn't imagine doing so. Regarding the second, as a business owner, I would hope frankly to benefit from the WSCC. As a business owner relatively distant from it, I wouldn't necessarily expect to benefit as much as places on the northeast side. And then the question becomes, how do you determine how much benefit each place obtained? And that's an impossibility. It's hard enough to collect taxes, period, much less to try to come up with something along those lines. It's not practical.
Thank you. Richard, you, Heather Miller, the two for. Sales tax dedicated to police, fire, or infrastructure as is proposed in the governor's budget proposal? And the second half is, should the beneficiaries of the Woodman Sports and Convention Center pay for the Woodman Sports and Convention Center?
All right. Well, it would be nice if we had a sales tax. It would be nice if our community directly benefited from a, even a half a percentage in a sales tax. And I think at, at one point last year, we, we spoke with one of our legislators and tried to press for even a quarter percent, a half percent. And that would go directly to fund our roads because we're looking at eight to nine million dollars directly for roads. And hello, Janesville, you will have no more potholes. That would be fantastic. Is it a reality? I think it could be, but at this point, we just don't have it. As far as the Woodman Center, oh, this is a tough one. This is a tough sell. I don't think the bulk of that 17.4 million dollars should fall on the taxpayers. I think there's a whole lot of folks that could be ponying up some money to help pay for this and I don't think the taxpayers are the ones to hold that, to carry that burden. I'm not necessarily in favor of saying all these businesses should pay their, pay their fair share because I think they will. If this comes to fruition, taxes will go up. They will be paying their fair share, as Dave said.
Thank you, Heather. We've got enough time that I believe we'll put in one more question and then we'll open things up for closing comments from each of you. So, I believe if I'm running down my list correctly, this next question should start with Michael Jackson. Michael, has the city investment in downtown Janesville produced the benefits that have long been sought? Could that investment have been better targeted or used in another part of the city for what you believe to be a greater benefit?
Boy, I'm proud of the downtown. I love going to the farmer's market in the summer. I enjoy walking town square. I'm proud of West Milwaukee. I have no complaints. I just think we haven't gone far enough. And the whole issue of the WSCC is going to come into play. If we're going to argue, we cannot raise taxes, we cannot have private-public funding, we have got to do all of it privately, we're gonna hamstring ourselves. I think we need to look south and I'm gonna address that in my closing comments. I think we need to look at the whole city of Janesville and use the downtown as a template. This is where we started, but let's not stop here for crying out loud. Let's, let's raise the level of our whole city. And I believe we have the resources and the willpower to do that.
Thank you, Michael. Spencer Zimmerman, same question. Has the city investment in downtown Janesville produced the benefits that have long been sought and could that investment have been better targeted or used in another part of the city for a greater impact?
Well, I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff that we didn't really need to do. You didn't need to take out the Monterey Dam, you know, it's, you know, it was, you had to remediate that whole area because you took out the dam and it changed the entire flow of the river and, you know, taking out the parking lot so you have less parking space over in downtown. I mean, I mean, it was, I just, I think that, you know, there's a lot of money that was just spent on, you know, decorative kind of artwork and stuff downtown and, you know, is that a necessity? Is that something that you need? Or are you just spending money for the sake of spending money? You know, it's, it's just, you know, you need to look at every dollar spent, make sure you're spending it efficiently because you're spending the taxpayers' money. And this isn't some endless, you know, keep, you, you can't just keep raising the taxes and keep spending and spending and spending because this whole country is $30 trillion in debt, you know? I first got involved in politics back when it was 2008, 2009 and we were approaching $10 trillion in debt. And I thought that was outrageous. Now, this whole country's $30 trillion in debt. And the same thing, you know, you gotta look at what you're spending the money on. So, you know, taking out a dam, that you could've just left it there and, you know, maybe it would've totally, you know, you know, it, it didn't, you didn't need to spend, you didn't need to take out the dam. There's so many different things that you didn't need to do. I just think that, you know, we need to live efficiently.
Thank you, Spencer. Richard Dino, same question. Has the city investment in downtown Janesville produced the benefits that have long been sought and could that investment have been targeted somewhere else or used in another part of the city for an even greater community benefit?
My first job in high school was working at RM Boswick's, which was a men's boutique in, adjacent to what is now in, adjacent to what is now Uton Mall. And at that time, there were probably four other men's boutiques and probably half dozen women's, plus shoe stores and more jewelry stores than you could count. Downtown was vibrant. It's where everybody went. It was a great place. And what happened over the preceding twenty years was a shame. And what has been done with downtown is amazing. And I think it's been a huge success in what it has attempted to do to revitalize a critical part of the city. I would definitely like to see the same sort of effort, which was very private-public, in other parts of the city. We need to share the benefits of living in Janesville and I think some sort of project on the south side would be brilliant and long overdue. But I think that downtown will certainly serve as a, as a great template and I can only hope that other projects along those lines are as successful.
Thank you, Richard. Heather Miller, has the city investment in downtown Janesville produced the benefits that have long been sought and could that investment have been better targeted or used in another part of the city for even greater community impact?
Well, there's no doubt that our downtown needed some help. Our downtown needed a revitalization, whatever definition that is, I think it's different for everybody. But the revamp, it's beautiful. It's not without flaws. I think it was a much needed, and let's face it, it attracts folks. A downtown is typically the hub of your city and it attracts people and it promotes the walking, more family, family-oriented vibe now. I know when I first came to town twenty-five years ago, it wasn't much about, it wasn't much about a downtown. It was just a bunch of old buildings and who wants to go down there? It's a little creepy, it's a little sketchy. Now I don't have that feeling. In terms of revitalization, I think it's been long overdue. I'm in agreement with you, Richard, that the south side needs some help. We need to start focusing on where we need to put the next big effort. And I think the south side is long overdue for a grocery store, for some revitalization, long overdue.
Thank you. Dave Marshick, has the city investment in downtown Janesville produced the benefits that have long been sought and could that investment have been better targeted or used in another part of the city for an even greater community impact?
Yes, no. Yes, it has given us the impact that's been sought after. Like I said in the beginning, I've been involved in downtown for fifteen years when the parking ramp still was over the river. I've read a lot about downtowns and Heather mentioned hub. You read a lot, downtowns are the heartbeat of the city. When businesses look to where they want to relocate, they look at the downtown. I've heard businesses talk about the downtown. Our city manager finalists all mentioned our great downtown. Downtowns are so important and so it was a great place to start. And the other neat thing about it was the public-private partnership of it. Yeah, the city put some money in, federal put some money in, state put some money in. We raised over six million dollars from individuals for that town square project. So there was a lot of different pieces that came together to get that pulled together. And then on top of that, Richard, would you have bought half a block if that wouldn't have happened? Would First National have moved downtown if that would have happened? Would the Cobblestone Hotel be downtown if we wouldn't have made that investment? No. Template was used. Downtown's a perfect template for what the Woodman Sports and Convention Center can do for that part of Janesville. So yes, absolutely. I'm very proud of our downtown and it's, for someone that's been plugging away at it through three administrations, soon to be four, it's very rewarding.
Thank you. In the time we've got remaining, we're going to afford each of you the opportunity for a ninety-second, not ninety-minute, ninety-second.
I'm going to take a break.
Closing comments in the hopes that you summarize why you're running for this office and what you hope to accomplish in the, in the next couple of years and frankly, how you want to be graded for that performance. So let's start that part of the conversation with Dave Marshick. Dave?
Thank you. Again, thanks everybody for coming. It's so nice to see people engaged. I also want to echo something. I've really enjoyed my time on the council. As Michael said, I think we've got a great council. We don't agree all the time and that's good. If you had a council that voted seven oh on everything, that's a bad council. We all have disagreements, but I think we are a good working council and I think everybody does that civic engagement that I talked about, putting the time in. I feel, one of the reasons I'm running is I feel there's some unfinished business that I want to help. I want to continue to serve this community. Michael mentioned we've got a new city manager coming in. Cross our fingers we'll have that done before the new council is seated, but that city manager, he's going to need support from people that have been here. So I want to help him get acclimated. I want to help him adjust to a new, a new job. And the Woodman Sports Convention Center, that's a big deal to me. I want to see that through one way or the other. So those are some reasons that I'm rerunning, but really it's just, I've enjoyed my time, I've enjoyed giving back. It's just what's in my heart and I hope I have another couple of years to do that.
Thank you, David. Michael Jackson, closing comments?
I don't feel as if the job is done. I still have some work to do. I want to see the Woodman Center come into fruition. I believe it's going to revitalize the Milton Avenue corridor, but I really want to see the south side addressed. I am almost to the point where I could say I'm passionate about that. There have been meetings behind closed doors as far as trying to just encourage that to happen and I believe we're going to see some movement in that direction. Let me tell you, the northeast is retail, but the south side is industrial manufacturing and warehouse. We're talking about one to two million square feet facilities down there. We're talking hundreds of jobs and all of that is going to bring more and more jobs, more and more houses. We have the Project Rife that's going to bring in multifamily and single-family homes to the south side. We have, well, we just have a great deal of work to be done, but a lot is being done and I really believe the key is a revitalization of Center Avenue with a new quality grocery store. And I believe, again, hopefully in my term, we're going to see that happen.
Thank you, Michael. Spencer Zimmerman, closing comments?
Well, you know, again, I thank everyone for coming here and getting involved and I've always wanted to serve my community, that's why I'm running. And, you know, I think that, you know, the city manager position, that decision is going to be an important decision. I'd like to hear, you know, some of the, if you, if you, members who are involved in that process, if we could hear a little bit more about the candidates of, for the city manager position and if you guys could share a little bit of that information with us, that'd be great because I guess, I have, I've looked in the Gazette and I haven't heard anything about who these candidates are going to be. So, is it out?
The press release is out, yes.
Okay, it is out today, okay. So I'd like to learn more about who the different candidates are for city manager, but I think, you know, this is a good time to ask, should that position, you know, should, should we have an elected position for that city manager? Or, you know, we've had the city manager form of government for a hundred years now, it's the centennial of that form of government here in Janesville. Before that, we had mayors, you know? Maybe it's a good opportunity at this hundred year to review, you know, look at where we're at and decide, you know, maybe, maybe we should go back to a mayor position so that there's accountability, so it's an elected position. You know, I'd be open to having the council, you know, review that and see maybe if they'd want to take some action on that, I don't know. But, you know, I want to get involved, that's why I'm running for office. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Richard Nino, closing comments?
I'm running for council because honestly, I have a passion for Janesville. My family made their home here, I contributed mightily, frankly, and I want to do the same. I find the challenges before the city to be things in which I'm very interested, the WSCC and the hopeful development of the south side and other parts, underserved parts of the city. I believe I have the capacity. My vocation as a business owner bring a certain perspective to things. It is, this is a city in which I've, I've lived almost all my life. It's something that I want to see flourish and I want to do everything possible that I can to bring that about.
Thank you, Richard. Heather Miller, closing comments?
I have to, I have to echo the, the other comments about unfinished business. I don't think, I don't think that we even know how much unfinished business lies ahead. When I look at the projects that are pending, when I look at the projects that'll be starting here in the next couple of months, it's exciting. It's invigorating to know that more, more traffic is, is coming through Janesville and people are setting up shop and making this their home. That being said, I am also here to act as a thorn in, in somebody's side to say, hey, the south side, remember us? Remember those who live here? We don't have a grocery store. We need to have our space revitalized too. And so I'm here to do that. I'm here to be that person to say, stop. That's great, but what about us? And so sometimes I think that gets lost. Sometimes I think that we get so wrapped up in all this new business and the industrial parks that that's good enough. And I'm telling you, it is not. And I will make sure that they remember, everybody remembers that the south side needs help.
Thank you, Heather. Ladies and gentlemen, there you have it. The election is April fourth. There will be four seats open, there's five candidates running. The most important challenge that I guess I leave everybody with tonight is, is this, get involved, get educated about the issues, don't be afraid to ask questions. Let me say that again, don't be afraid to ask questions. And frankly, expect results, hold people accountable. If you do those things, then you could be a contributor to a great, growing and prospering community. The candidates, I believe, are willing to stick around for a few minutes after we break up here to meet with you on an individual basis. And I challenge you again, get involved, get educated, ask questions, be, be there and expect results and hold people accountable. Thank you for the time you've spent with us tonight and I wish that in the future you join us again. I will mention, put a plug in, we're doing a panel discussion in the city of Milton where we'll meet the candidates for mayor and for city council in Milton, as well as the school board candidates in Milton on the twenty-third of this month. It'll be held at the chapel on the third floor of the old main building on the old Milton College campus. So you have an opportunity to see a beautiful building and meet and learn about the issues in our neighboring community to the north. Thank you and have a pleasant night.